Here. So in that case, I'd like to call the March 17th, 2021 Board Meeting to Order and say happy St. Patrick's Day and remind everyone to please mute your audio when not speaking as well as stating your name prior to making comment or emotion or a second for an action item. And I thank you for that. I will ask for each Commissioner, please respond with here when I call out your name. Commissioner Doan.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Duggan.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Schmidt.
I'm here.
And Commissioner Bagnall, I am here as well. So we will start off tonight with reports by the Chief Executive Officer and management staff. Take it away, our CEO, Tom Hickman.
Thank you, President Bagnall and Commissioners. Good evening. Or maybe it's still late afternoon. Not sure which is considered. It's just nice to see lights outside still. Okay. So let me jump to my next slide here. Everyone can see my slides, yes? All right.
Yes.
Yay.
We see it.
Okay, Portland Cryptosporidium results for the month of February 2021. The Portland Water Bureau reported a total of six cryptosporidium osis detections in water samples collected from the Bull Run Headworks. The Oregon Health Authority has determined that the public does not need to take additional protections at this time. Portland Water Bureau will continue increased sampling four times per week until there are at least three weeks without any detections. Complete results of Portland's cryptosporidium monitoring are posted on the city's website, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW DOT PORTLAND DOT GOV forward slash WATER forward slash WATER QUALITY slash TEST dash RESULTS pound sign TOC dash cryptosporidium. Whew, wow.
That was like a lot of slashes. I don't think I got them.
Yeah.
I was going to ask you to repeat, but I don't think anybody else would think that's funny.
I just figured in case somebody was listening, they can and didn't see it, they can, they can back up and, and, and write it all back down again. So, okay. So some good news, US Congress passed and the President signed the American Rescue Act. Included in the latest COVID-19 relief effort is 500 million in grants to states and tribes to reduce arrearses and water rates for low-income customers and 130.2 billion for coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, with some of these funds set aside to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure, premium pay for essential workers, and to provide aid to households with, and small business and nonprofits. We are reviewing this legislation closely to see how we can help our eligible customers access money that can help with their water bills. In addition, we are looking at what other funding opportunities there may be for water system infrastructure that is associated with this bill. And then quickly on a side note, I attended the last two days, AWWA's conference, Legislative Conference, where they had a number of congressional folks speak. And there, they were spending a lot of time talking about the next bill that is coming that's related to infrastructure. And there is a great deal of money in there dedicated for infrastructure. We are supposed to see a draft, I found this out this afternoon, a draft of that bill sometime tonight or tomorrow. So looking forward to seeing that and seeing what we may get out of it. Oregon Legislative Session, TVWD is closely monitoring 26 bills in the Oregon Legislature. We have sent opposition letters to all members on the House of Representatives Water Committee and testified against HB 2310 on plastic pipe. This is the one that is requiring that we allow plastic pipe. Clark Balfour and Joel Carey are working with our partners at Oregon Water Utility Council and the Organization of Clean Water Agencies and Special Districts of Oregon. And in fact, Clark Balfour, I believe testified on a bill here the other day. So this is all stuff we are monitoring very closely. Let's see here. Okay, TVWD Virtual Forum, we renamed it to Talkin' Water, make it a little more relaxed. The district's customer forum has been renamed Talking Water. And our next event will be held Wednesday, March 24th, from 12 to 1. Kerry Pack, the Chief Engineer, will serve as the host. And Scott Fortman, our Geographic Information System Analyst, will be the speaker. Scott will talk about how ESRI and ArcGIS is being used to provide the Willamette Water Supply System Construction information visually. So we have found that these talks and discussions have been pretty successful and will continue to do so. And I just want to mention that if, if the Board ever would like us to cover a special topic because you're hearing something from your constituents, we'd be happy to do so. The April 6th Board Work Session, there is only a single agenda item for the April 6th Board Work Session, the WWSS Update. In light of the other meetings related to the 21 through 23 budget, we are suggesting that we cancel that April 6th Work Session because you will have met just, I think, a night or two before. And then you're going to have follow-on meetings with the budget. We thought maybe the Board would enjoy a night off since we didn't have anything pressing for that topic for that evening. So wanted to see if the Board was comfortable with us not doing that Work Session.
This is Jim Doan.
I'm good with it.
Go ahead.
Oh, this is Dick. I'm good with it.
I think it's fantastic idea. This is Jim Doan.
Well, that would be two. Commissioner Sanders or Duggan?
I'm fine with it, especially since the April WS, WS meeting will be held on the first. So it'll be old news for me if we have, have an update on the sixth. So I'm fine with that.
Yeah, you'll all that stuff lapping at your back teeth. Mr. Sanders, any concerns?
None whatsoever. My only concern is that Commissioner Duggan would have old news to deal with. So I don't want that to happen. I'm happy to dismiss that date.
Thanks for looking out for me.
My pleasure.
Thank you. It sounds like the April 6th Board Work Session is canceled. And so moving along with the CEO report?
Yes. So now turn it over for the Safety Minute and Department Report to Andrew Karstrom, our Customer Service Manager. He's going to present the, both the Safety Minute and the Department Report this evening.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Well, good evening, President Bagnall and Board Commissioners. Let's see, I am going to keep this moving. Sorry, I'm taking control of the deck. All right. All right. Well, so March is National Nutrition Month and your Safety Moment tonight are tips for eating right and specifically building a salad. And the source is the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics. So let's talk about smart tips to build a healthy salad. Well, you can pack more nutrition into your day with a colorful nutrient-dense salad. You can keep basing, basic ingredients on hand at home for a quick addition to really any meal. Encourage kids to eat more veggies by setting out ingredients to make their own salad creations. You can mix and match ingredients to explore new combinations. Assemble your salad by selecting one or more ingredients from the groups on the following slides. Really important, consider flavor, texture, and color, and add a small amount of salad dressing, and enjoy. All right. So step one is about building your base. So select one of them, follow the leafy greens you'll see in this list below, ranging from arugula, Boston Bib salad, up to romaine and spinach. Step two is boosting the nutrients with extra vegetables and fruit. You can add vegetables, extra vegetables in the salad to increase the texture and flavor, as well as boost the nutrients. So everything from artichoke hearts and broccoli to your standard onion and tomatoes. Fruits may work well as well in salad to give you a little extra sweetness. And all right. And step three, consider adding protein to make it a main dish. This could be cooked meat, poultry, and seafood, or on the vegetarian side, things like black beans, chickpeas, edamame, kidney beans, navy beans, tofu. And finally, step four, dress up your salad with a small amount of dressing. And if you want, sprinkle on some extras, things like cooked grains, unsalted nuts and seeds, cheese, and then other items like avocado, bacon bits, croutons, olives, and tortilla chips. So that is your Safety Moment for tonight. And let's see, moving on. All right. So we're transitioning now to the Department Report. Tonight's Department Report is information we had in an internal publication last year. I'm not sure if you saw it or not, but it's on meter box repairs. It was in Paycheck News. So let's talk about meter box repairs. Meter boxes really incur a variety of insults. And one of the frequent problems is damage from tree roots. So your field customer service staff, or FCS, they have a lot of expertise in tackling range, a range of repairs in a variety of situations. And meter box repairs are really only one type of the repair that they address. So I'm going to give you some images in a little visual tour into meter box issues and one specific repair that FCS crews did. So the next three slides are called the Roots of the Problem. This one is a view of an unexcavated meter box that's impacted by a real mass of pretty dense tree roots. And if you take this kind of situation and pull the soil back, you can really see the, the root damage and the intrusion of the roots onto, onto the meter itself. This, this is an image of a meter box that's surrounded by some pretty invasive encroaching roots. Another issue that FCS crews encounter are crushed boxes. And in this one, you have two meter boxes side by side, and they both need repair by crews. And that's the situation we had on the specific example. I'll show you in a moment. So the following slides will give you insight on a specific repair. The issue that the crews encountered was a safety hazard, hazard for employees and the public. And this is really important. During the COVID era, there was a, a project that was a meter box assessment. And it was a nice collaboration between operations and the field customer service. So on this specific example, the field customer service removed one of the box tops. And what they found was a hole created by the, you know, historically, a long time ago, an incorrect type of box for the sidewalk meter. And then the box next to it was crumbling and the box lid had fallen inside. So there were like two, two boxes that needed to be swapped out. So the next image will show you the, the cut. So to correctly place the new boxes, the crew had to cut into the sidewalk to clear enough room for the, the new sidewalk-friendly boxes, both which will have metal lids. Next image is packing the gravel around the box before applying the concrete. And then finally, this is voila, this is the finished product. And of course, after the concrete sets, the color will fade and blend in with the existing surrounding sidewalk. So that's your Department Report tonight, visual tour on meter box repairs.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. That was enlightening as always. And Tom, do we have anything else for the CEO announcements?
Nope, we are good.
Okay, then we will move smoothly, as smoothly as we can in this Zoom era, to Commissioner Communications and Reports of Meetings Attended. So let's go ahead and stick with alphabetical order and start with Commissioner Doan, your Report of Meetings Attended, please.
Yes. Of course, there's tonight's regular meeting. On the 11th, I attended the Lower Business Association. And we talked about the, the water line coming from the Willamette. That's what it was called, a water line. And I indicated that it was a lot bigger than a water line. And anyway, everybody's been talking about how cool it's been to actually have construction zones that work. And I'd like to pass that on to the WWSS staff. There was the Work Session on the 2nd of March. On the 24th, I attended the TVWD webinar. On March 4th, I attended the Citizen Participation Organization Number Five. And on the 22nd, worked with Financial Strategies, attended that session. CPO 5 is, you know, is starting to get almost a dozen people now, which there used to be a lot more coming when there was people in attendance. So anyway, one thing I thought I'd pick up on is that people thought it was nifty that at the Lower Business Association, that we were starting to go after collections after the, the second or the third stimulus check. And they thought that was pretty, pretty kind of us to do that. So I thought I'd pass that on. That's it.
Thank you. That's interesting. Commissioner Duggan, how about your Meetings Attended?
Okay. I also attended the H2O No with Tom Hickman, Virtual Forum on February 24th. On the 1st of March, I attended the WWSS Update with staff. We talked about financial issues. On the 2nd of March, I attended our Work Session where we received WWSS updates and also updates on lead and copper rules, water quality, and cybersecurity. On the 4th, I attended the WWSS Regular Board Meeting. On the 6th, I attended the Washington County Commissioner's Virtual Town Hall where they discussed collectively and individually their 2021 priorities. On the 9th, I attended the Washington County CPO Number One Meeting, where our own staff, Robert Witham, made an excellent presentation on the Willamette Water System. The topic of the night was focused on emergency supplies and preparing for disaster. And the Willamette Water Supply was a great subject to talk about, the fact that it's going to be resilient in the Cascadia Zone or other, other earthquakes where the rest of the sources may not. And then the rest of the evening was also talking about how to prepare individually as a homeowner or as a resident. On the 11th, I attended the last meeting that I'll have with Fay Branton as part of the WWSS to sign documents, and then tonight's meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan, and lots of stuff. Commissioner Sanders, you're up next.
Thank you. On the 22nd of February, I had a finance meeting with our CEO and our CFO to talk about financial strategies for the next coming biennium. On the 24th, the H2O, H2 No with Tom Hickman. And then on the 2nd, our Work Session where we, again, reviewed what was going on with the Willamette Water Supply Project and also some of the finance information. And then tonight's monthly Board Meeting. That would be it for me.
Thank you, sir. And moving smoothly to Commissioner Schmidt, how about your Meetings Attended?
Well, on the 2nd of March, I attended the Work Session. And also, financial forecast was in there. On the 9th, I had a meeting with President Bernice and Tom, planning the agenda in the tonight's Board Meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. And moving, it's my turn. On the 23rd of February, I had a meeting with the CEO regarding the scenarios. And then on the 2nd of March, the Board Work Session, whereas other people have commented, we talked about the Willamette Water Supply System, the updates on the lead and copper rule, and our cybersecurity updates. On the 9th, I had a meeting with the CEO and the Board Vice President to do agenda planning. And then, of course, tonight's Board Meeting for District Business. So then, moving on to the next item of business, we have, do we have any topics that need to be raised by Commissioners? Hearing none. Public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the Board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the regular agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who would like to comment tonight? I am hearing the sounds of silence, so I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any Board Member may request that an item to be removed, may request for an item to be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the Board has approved those items which do not require separate discussion. Tonight, we have two items on the consent agenda. The first is to approve the February 17th, 2021 Regular Meeting Minutes. And the second is to approve the March 20, March 2nd, 2021 Work Session Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Jim Doan. I so moved.
This is Todd Sanders. I second.
Thank you. Commissioner Doan has moved. Commissioner Sanders has seconded. So I would like the, to ask our district recorder to provide a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
As that is unanimous, the motion passes. Moving to our business agenda, the first item on the business agenda is to consider approving the Twollen Valley Water District's 2022-23 Financial Strategy with a staff report from our CFO, Paul Matthews.
So this is going to be a bit of a joint presentation between Paul and I. I'm going to start it. And then I'm going to turn it over to Paul Matthews to take it to the finish line here. So I want to start out, this has been, this has been a bit of a journey to get here, and I think an important one. I think we've had a number of really good discussions with the Board about the financial strategies. And what you're going to see tonight is, is we've, we've got three recommended strategies, or we got three strategies, one of them we are recommending. But let's start a little bit with where our concerns are that are guiding all of this. So management's concerns on the risks side is really that there's significant risks that future rate increases could be higher than planned. And that is something we're really trying to avoid, that we don't have, you know, rates that are predictable to the extent we can make them predictable in the future, meaning, you know, rates that go up and down without much warning. So we're trying our best to stabilize that and, and put ourselves in a stronger situation as we move forward. Another risk is that we're concerned that the economy may not recover to pre-COVID levels for water sales. The reduction in revenue has been, has had a significant impact on us and, and will continue. And, and we need to take action to offset that. And then lastly, we are entering the highest risk period for the project, for the Willamette Project. And that means we've got a number of construction projects that begin. And with those comes great risk. And we're going to talk a little bit about that. There's still things this, that can surprise us during construction, still lots of unknowns that can hit us and that can impact us from a rate and fiscal perspective. So our recommendation to offset these risks is to build some financial capacity and adopt rates that provide financial resources in advance. So again, this is in advance of being in a position that we actually know these unknowns. It puts us in a, in a stronger position as we move forward. And then enhance the Customer Emergency Assistance Program. You're going to hear more about that tonight. And we're looking for ways to do that, including utilizing the new bill that I mentioned in my CEO notes that the administration passed, that is going to provide access to funds for those that are in need. And then tied right to that is pursue federal and state assistance. We certainly have an opportunity to weigh in on some federal bills related to infrastructure. And to the extent we can access funds to help us, we certainly will do that. And we'll be looking to do that. Okay. So some of the challenges that are facing the public works projects, the environment that we are all living in is there's higher expectations of the accuracy of cost estimates. And I'm going to give a quick little presentation on the next slide on that, that there, there's a reason we can only do so well with cost estimating. And there's still an element of unknown. But there's also an increasing sensitivity to public investments. And not that there isn't an understanding that we need to make these investments, but the question is, is the timing, you know, we're, we're in a pretty, you know, serious financial situation as a nation. And so people are questioning the need to do these investments right now. And then lastly, customers' expectations of future costs. You know, we want to get to a point that future costs are stabilized and, and more predictable than where we're currently at. And then projects with longer duration present more risk. That's just the, a fact of taking on something like the WWSP, which is a very long, very large project. And as years go on, lots of things can change. You may have seen in the papers or on news releases that steel prices currently are at all-time highs. That certainly, when we started on this project, that was not a known. You know, we didn't realize that those would exceed cost of inflationary measures. And we're certainly seeing that. And then lastly, COVID-19 continues and likely will continue to throw curveballs. We just, you know, it presents its own unpredictability, unpredictability and everything we're We just, you know, it presents its own unpredictability and everything we're doing. So those are some of the challenges. A little bit more on cost and risk. So this is a table that comes from the Association of, for the Advancement of Cost Engineering. And I've used it for a number of years now. I find it to be very helpful when I'm talking to folks that aren't engineers, that aren't in the business of what we do. And so I like to show, you know, when we start a project and we don't have a lot of information, so that's that top row where it says Class 5, if you go across the row there, at a concept level where we just, we're thinking it's a good idea, but we don't know, there's very little information on project definition at that point. You're not sure where you're actually going to construct things. It's truly a concept level. You can see the range of accuracy of an estimate at that time. You know, in my years of experience now, I'm still waiting for a project that comes in 50% below at that level. I haven't had it happen frankly, and I haven't seen it happen. So typically they come in higher because there are things we just don't know. So and it can go, it can be as much as 100% more than what you initially estimated at that point. So as you can see, as you move down on that table to the Class 4, Class 3, your level, oops, I'm going to try to go backwards there, you can see that your level of definition of increases. And as that definition increases, one of the things that happens is your cost estimates get better, as you would hope. And the thing that most people don't realize is that even when we are at a level of definition of 100%, where we know, we still can have cost changes. And again, they typically tend to go up rather than down. But you can see that it's not out of line that after a design is all complete and you're going to bid for construction, where your definition would be considered at 100%, you could have a bid that comes in 10% higher than what you estimated. So that happens. And then, of course, during the construction, you can run into surprises. So all of this uncertainty with us heading into the bulk of construction on the WWSP, it is the driver of our financial strategies and it is the driver of our concerns in terms of risk. I want to say that our WWSP team, they've done a phenomenal job. I really can't say enough good about the work that they've done in estimating. If you look back at the early estimates to now, they've been very, very tight and they've done a great job. But there's a limit to what they can do. And of course, with steel prices going up as much as they are, we could see higher than what they've estimated as we move into the heavy construction elements of the phase of that project. So, you know, all of this can be summed up by rums-filled nature of knowledge. And many of you may recognize this. And there's just, this is just the nature of things. And I love it when I can stay over on the left-hand side of things with things I know. But unfortunately, that's not where we get to stay and we often find, we move along this diagram throughout the course of a project. So I'm going to hand this over to Paul at this point, Paul Matthews, our CFO. And he's going to take it from here and explain where we're headed with our strategy.
Thank you, Tom. So move right along here. What we're needing to do tonight is actually identify the financial strategy that will serve as the basis for our financial plan that we'll present to the board next month for its approval. So the strategy itself is used to evaluate the implications of alternative financial strategies we presented during the, with the Board Finance Committee and with actually some separate meetings with board members, some alternatives that we looked at so we could find the best approach for the district. And we're going to use this to help guide the selection of our CIP as well as set rates for the upcoming biennium. It'll be the roadmap that we use as we develop our requested budgets move forward. This is all part of the district's financial management process. And you all have seen this and we've used it over the years. So I'm not going to go into all the details of the intricacies here and the interaction between these. But essentially, the financial plan is that long-term plan that guides the district's financial strategy. It helps us set the budget, which is that near-term spending plan, the two-year spending plan is the budget. And it informs our rate setting process as well, which of course generates the revenues that we need to operate the district and to fund the capital improvements for the district. And the last step of this, of course, is delivering on these things. Throughout this project, we have oversight and we're about to kick off the budget process, which will bring in the Citizens Budget Committee that will oversee our work. When we go through the rate process, we'll have a rate hearing, we'll invite the citizens to participate. In fact, we've used a rate advisory committee in the past to help guide our direction there. And when we get to the delivery, we subject ourselves to an independent audit. And you all have heard from Moss Adams, that goes back through our work and takes a look at that. But what we're doing now with the financial plan is we're developing, with the financial strategy, we're developing the basis for our financial plan that will then bring to the Board of Commissioners next month for your oversight to make sure that we are in fact matching the district's policymakers' decisions here. So moving right along, we do have a problem, as Tom indicated earlier. On the revenue side, if we look carefully, and we've been talking about this on a monthly basis with the board, our declines actually started in the summer of 2019. The commercial declines have become more pronounced during COVID as a result of some of the economic dislocations from the shutdown orders that we've had. Both residential and the production class have done well. In fact, residential has stabilized at a lower level than in 2019. We did suffer that, but we're not seeing a COVID effect necessarily on the residential, whether talking about single-family or multifamily. These lower sales, though, in addition to that, we have our collection problems. We've been talking about that. We took a charge for bad debt expense that we discussed last month. Those things are very real and affecting us. But over the course of the biennium, our revenues could be affected by over $12 million when you look at reduced water sales as well as our bad debt expense. Construction costs, as Tom indicated, there was uncertainty there. The WFS costs are somewhat higher than planned, but those cost increases are within the normal range if you consider the information that Tom presented from the ACE. We're still early in the project, though, in the program itself. And as Dave Krask would surely say, we've got a lot of construction risk ahead of us as we build out the rest of the program. So with that as our problem, lower revenues and a lot of construction risk, we've developed a strategy that addresses those concerns. Now, when I talk about the revenues, you see this on a monthly basis. It's in the month in review and in fact, I present to you a monthly basis as well the details. I just want to put it in perspective where we are with our reduction in revenues. We had a few months there where we started feeling pretty good and then the economy went back into lockdown and then we're back in the unfavorable territory. How soon will this recover? Well, we'll need to see, but that's the reality of where we are right now. So what we've presented here are three strategies that we could move forward with. The first strategy presents the most risk. And we're talking about risk, we're talking about the risk that future rate increases are much higher than what we had planned. So the first one on the list there, the alternative number one, presents the most risk. And that would be to essentially adopt this scenario that we presented the board back in January, trying to have levelized rate increases until the program completion, until the funding of the program gets fully implemented in 2025. A somewhat lower risk to the future rates would be to take a larger rate increase now. That will provide us a little bit more financial capacity in the event that some of these uncertain events occur in the future. And that would be number two. The third one on the list is to have higher rate increases now and then work closely with our partners and with Dave's team to reduce some of the WWSP outlays by deferring some projects into the future, selected projects and only projects that wouldn't put the entire program at risk. So if we look at the typical bills and the impacts that we see from these various strategies, they're presented in the right-hand side here. These are the typical bills for a single-family residential customer assuming seven CCF of water per month by 2025. So it's after the bulk of these rate increases are in place. The far right-hand column shows the savings from the first scenario. So for example, if we were to go with the less-risk scenario, number two, it would reduce that typical bill by $1.61 per month. If we went with the number three, the least risk would actually reduce that by $2.74 a month. The primary thing that's driving those savings is the way that we're able to finance alternative two versus alternative one. But when we look at alternative three, it's because we deferred some of that capital outlay out into the future years. So then we, so then we looked at a what-if scenario. What happens if the cost of the Willamette Water Supply Program are, for example, just 10% above what the baseline projections are right now? And you can see if we pursued strategy number one, we have this labeled as 1B, could've come up a different name, I guess, we would have implemented the 2.75% rate increases, but then we would have a very large 15.1% makeup rate increase in the first year of the coming biennium, just to absorb the impact of that 10% hit to our capital project. If, on the other hand, we were able to go with scenario 3B, which is reducing the capital outlays wisely by selecting projects that we could push out and having larger rate increase now, you can see that in '24, '25, if we were to sustain an increase of 10% to the program, that we would have higher rates, but those higher rates wouldn't be in the neighborhood of 5.1%, it'd be in the neighborhood of about 5.7%. It's important when we look at these numbers, if you see 5.7%, assume that that's somewhere between 5.5% and 6.5%. I mean, we can't cut these numbers that finely because we don't know what's going to happen with the weather, with growth, with system development, charging a lot of other factors. But this gives you an indication of where these things would go. And then, of course, if you look at the far right-hand column, we can then see what happens to those typical monthly bills. Certainly, they're going to be higher if we increase the total project amount by 10%. That's a big increase in capital outlays for the entire program. But under the scenario 1B, that would drive up that monthly bill to $80.55, and that's a $5.32 increase above that scenario one, that first one on the list. If we pursue strategy 3B, it'd be a 23 cent increase over the one that we have in strategy one. So balancing all these risks, we think this is the best way to serve our customers by reducing some of that future rate uncertainty. Okay, so the three scenarios that we have, the baseline scenario, that's what we presented to the board in January, it's the forecast of even rate increases. I think we have a question. Let me pause. We do have a question?
Yes, this is Commissioner Don.
Yes, Commissioner Don.
So when we're discussing the reducing the WWSS costs, is that in addition to the dropping off the pipeline from Francis to 26 and going to one reservoir? Are there other changes contemplated?
No, no, Commissioner Don, excellent question. It is those very items that we've talked about before, just those items. And that would be the extent of delaying. Well, they're the ones we spoke about. Maybe Dave Krask or Tom could add to that answer?
Yeah, no, those are the major ones. There are some smaller things that are related to the water treatment plant that the operations has said they can do, but those are pretty insignificant and don't have any significant impacts to anything we're doing. Dave, if you wanted to add anything to that, feel free.
I will feel free to just confirm that what you said there, Tom and Paul, is correct. Commissioner Don, the things that Tom's talking about at the treatment plant are things like the storage building and some other minor effects at the water treatment plant, nothing related to the primary processing. And some other minor changes such as the fiber communication system that we'll implement later, but no. So the major changes are, yes, the, what we call PLW-2, the pipeline from Francis to 26, and the one of the two reservoirs.
Okay, thank you.
And Carrie has her hand up and I think it's important. She also speak to this so the board gets a full picture. So I mean, I'd like to invite Carrie. Carrie?
Thank you, Tom. Commissioner Don and commissioners, I just wanted to add a comment that the delays and deferral of the elements of Willamette Supply Program that we've been talking about has all been vetted through the Operations Committee. And from the operational standpoint, we feel pretty comfortable with moving forward with the deferral of elements that we've been talking about. So I just wanted to interject the operational perspectives into it and feel pretty, let you all know that we have been lock and hand, you know, hand in glove with Dave and his team to make sure that what we're recommending is not only affordable but also operatable when it becomes that time to operate.
Okay, thank you for the reassurance.
Okay. So the baseline is even rate increases over time, not, it does not provide any additional financial capacity in the early years. It is what we presented the board and it's less likely to achieve what we're describing as rate stability. The second scenario, it is the baseline funding for the capital program that we talked about in January, requires higher rate increases in the first two years. It does increase our financial capacity because we have those additional rate increases in this biennium. And it's more likely than the baseline to achieve rate stability. The third scenario is the one that we're recommending, which is the higher rate increases in the near term. And we reduce the near-term capital outlays by deferring those selected projects for the WWSS. It increases our capacity the most because not only do we have the revenue, but we've actually reduced our capital expenditure somewhat, deferred it. It is the most likely to achieve the financial stability. So the recommended financial strategy from management is scenario three that we just talked about. Having said that, we are still confronted with the uncertainty that Tom talked about. And we kind of put the colors in here to sort of show the greater pain as you move from left to right. And the things that concern us the most are those things that we thought we knew but that we don't. And there are several of those things out there that we'll continue to work on to try to reduce those unknown unknowns and make sure that we're managing our risk appropriately. So our recommended strategy, just to highlight it, is to build financial capacity now by lowering the risk of future rate increases, adopt the higher near-term rate increases to 9.5% rate increases in fiscal year '22 and '23. And then we work with Dave, his team and our partners on delaying those WWSS projects that makes sense to do so. With that, are there any further questions?
So I guess I would like to just clarify that I understand, and I think the board understands, that we need to go with higher rate increases in the near term for the next two years and that we are looking very closely at delaying certain aspects of the Willamette Water Supply Project, certain aspects, not a lot of aspects. But we still have But we still have substantial, as I understand it, we still have substantial uncertainty out there in that if the EPA, if our WIFI alone becomes endangered by delaying some of those projects, by changing some of our projected work plan, we have to stay nimble. We have to be willing to move back. I think I speak for the entire board in saying we understand that we need higher near-term rate increases, but I don't, I'm not getting a feeling that this is really settled, that we may still need to discuss at future meetings which projects can or cannot be delayed and for how long. Is that correct?
I think I'll defer to Tom on that, but yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know that we'll be talking about what projects can be delayed. I think it will be more a question of how they get delayed. So what gets delayed is the same, if at all. So what Paul just pulled back up here, the way we look at this is if the EPA comes back and said, "We're sorry, we can't give you any of the flexibility you're requesting." If you want this loan, you got to build the whole thing, including the tank and PLW 2.0. If that's what they told us, we then end up at scenario two, which is, it's one of the reasons that we are recommending saying, "Well, let's go with scenario three." And if that risk comes to fruition, we're still in a position that we can deal with it and we can handle it. I think there might be other discussions that we'd have to come back to the board with, potentially that, and this is really, it's going to be totally dependent on what the EPA says, but you know, our partners have said, you know, they can't afford those two elements. They can't do it. So then the discussion, if the EPA says we can't delay it, I think the other discussion with the EPA is, could we remove those two elements from the WIFI loan and reapply for the WIFI loan for those at a future date when we're ready to construct them? That would be a discussion we'd come back to the board with, but not thinking about, okay, let's now look at delaying different elements or doing different things. We're going to be talking about those same elements. I hope that got to your question.
It did, and I appreciate that. I just want to be clear that this is a this is a, it's a moving target that continues to move and that this is not, in any sense, our last discussion. I understand absolutely that we need higher rate increases than we thought we needed for a variety of reasons, but we need to continue to keep looking at all of these questions and to keep talking with our partners and with the EPA to make sure that we can do what we think we want to do.
President Bagnall, you're exactly right. And we're hopeful that we were able to move these projects in a responsible way. It's not just the EPA either. I mean, there's some other things that need to be solidified. But the most important element is what Tom said, which is if, for some reason, we're not able to defer some or all these projects, we're basically moving from scenario three up towards scenario two, depending on what we are able to defer. But we've protected the rate pairs to a certain degree. Commissioner Doan, did you have your, I think somebody?
Yeah, no. Tom, this is Jim Doan. You said partners were having trouble. Does that mean Beaverton's also having trouble?
I don't think it's as much. I mean, they certainly are having financial challenges. I don't think their financial challenges, because they're a smaller holder in this project, right? So this project doesn't impact them as much, but they're certainly seeing, from what I understand, they're seeing that they've also been impacted by COVID and reduced revenues. So I think their challenges are slightly different, but they would be looking across the board if those challenges got worse, what they could do.
So they're not pressuring us, but they would appreciate it if we could help.
I would argue right now, they're probably more in the position that they're saying, "Hey, we will support both TVWD and Hillsborough making these decisions right now." Because, yes, it helps us a little bit, but we understand the importance this is to our partners. That's their position right now.
Okay.
Commissioner Doan, I think it's important to note that even if we had no partners and we were doing this alone, staff would probably still be bringing a recommendation like this to you to consider on behalf of our customers to reduce that future rate uncertainty. Does that make sense? Yeah, we'd be pursuing a very similar strategy even if we hadn't have our partners on board with us.
Okay, thank you.
So if there are no other, if there are, let me pause, see if there are other questions. If there are not, then we have a specific next step we'd like to pursue.
Other questions at this point from board members? Then let's move to all those next steps.
Okay, so our next step would be if you approve the financial strategy, staff would then prepare the financial plan based on that strategy. And our goal then would be to present that financial plan, which is the formal document, to the board at your April regular meeting. That's our goal. Obviously, workloads would drive the final completion date on that. So what we would ask you to do now is approve by motion one of the three financial strategies and the recommended strategy was strategy number three.
So may I have a motion from a board member to approve strategy number three for the district to move forward?
This is Dick. I told moved.
And this is Jim, my second. Jim Doan, sorry.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Schmidt and seconded by Commissioner Doan to move forward with strategy number three as recommended by staff?
Excuse me. I'm sorry, this is Todd Sanders. I do have one question before we move forward. And that is between risk level two and risk level three, they have the same exact first two-year plan or plan for '22 and '23. We can only, by rule, only go out two years. Is that correct?
No. So the board can adopt rates annually, they can do it on a biennial basis, or they could do it over a longer period of time.
Okay.
There's a trade-off on the risk there, and when we, we used to adopt rates on an annual basis. And then when we convened the Rate Advisory Committee, one of their recommendations was to set rates on a biennial basis, and so that's the recommendation here.
All right, thank you for clarification.
But the problem you run into, and Paul, I don't mean to step on you on this, but the problem you run into when you go beyond what we have already accepted and what we have already accepted as recommended by the Rate Advisory Committee is you get into a position where you're obligating future boards. And that's very awkward, and that's not something we've done. And it's also something that, you know, and my past history plays into this. I think that's something that we have always offered our rate pairs that I think is important that says, "We look at this all the time." We don't just lock you into something and never check back to see if it's okay. So I would personally be uncomfortable with adopting any rate scenarios that go beyond the two-year period.
And it presents, again, additional risk to the district. If we go back and we check in with Mr. Rumsfeld, all those things are going to be occurring. And two years, we can make it through three or four years. We're going to know a lot more about the program, its cost, and we'll be in a better position to set those rates. So two years is probably about as long as that I would recommend, given our uncertainty that we have.
All righty, so then one last clarifying question, please. Again, this is Todd Sanders. Are we voting then to adopt nine-and-a-half percent for the next biennium? Are we voting to adopt nine-and-a-half percent for the next biennium and then 4.4% in '24 and '25?
Actually, neither. So I'm going to split here, so I need your, Commissioner Sanders. I'm sorry to do that, but it's really important that we separate the board's rate-setting authority and responsibility from what we're doing right now. So what we're asking the board now is to provide us a strategy that we then put into our financial plan, and that financial plan will then inform our rate process. But the rates will actually be brought to you probably in the November, I'm sorry, in the August-September timeframe for your adoption of those rate increases or changes. And one of the other things that we're going to be doing in the coming biennium, we're going to jump ahead, you'll hear about this next week when we have the Budget Committee assembled, but is that we're going to ask for funding for a rate study. We do that about every five years, and it's been about five years since we've done the last one. And we're going to look at our rates, revenue stability, as well as affordability. So that rate-setting authority is separate from the financial planning that we're trying to do now. It helps us prepare the rates, but you're not actually adopting rates.
I understand.
And just to add on to that, because I can't help myself, but I mean, this is one of the things that the staff needs from the board at this point when they go into the budgeting process for the next biennial budget. They need to know what the sideboards are. They need to know how much we're willing to allow for revenues, and they need to know if they need to prepare their budgets that show cuts to the CIP, that show cuts to the well-amounted water supply. So what we're doing right now, as I understand it, is providing guidance for the biennial budget process, not so much anything else.
That's right, President Bagnall. And we use it, we use this to develop the financial plan, which ultimately guides the discussion. And in all honesty, because we've had a lot of frank discussions with individual commissioners along the way, those cuts have already been factored into our in-district CIP to bring forward the strategy that we have here tonight.
Righto. Thank you for all the clarification. That helps me a great deal. I will stop interrupting.
So not a worry, but before the discussion, and the discussion took place right when it was supposed to, but my memory is that we did have a motion and a second to approve strategy number three. And if there is no other discussion, I guess I would ask Debbie to call for a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
So I have an offer for you all tonight. This would be the time that I would go through an update on the financial performance, which is part of this agenda item. The slides were included in the packet that our district recorder sent out to you all. And in effort to save time, I can either just answer questions that you might have on the presentation or if you'd prefer, I'm prepared to go through the presentation tonight. So I'll defer to your interest and time.
So I read through the whole thing, and it has your usual level of clarity, Paul. And I wish it had more good news.
As do I.
But so if you, I will defer to the other commissioners on this. Would you like to hear the presentation or would you just like to hear from Paul whether there are any late-breaking updates on this?
This is Dick. I will just soon just have the updates.
This is Jim Doan. I'm okay with that, too.
Okay, well, I'll proceed that way. And if there's a desire for more information, I can answer questions. Essentially, we're finding ourselves in somewhat of a holding pattern as it relates to the financial performance. We're continuing to see a reduction or a slowdown in our revenues. We did have that little bright spot, maybe related to part estimated reads in September from the smoke, but we're kind of back at that lower water sales. If you look at the details, it's still, we're seeing a reduction over across the board since 2019, but probably COVID-related in the commercial class production is still doing quite well. Our collections expenses are continuing to be a challenge, and you'll hear more about that in the next presentation. But we are at about $900,000, over $900,000 in outstanding balances on those customers who, if we were not in a COVID environment where we've had a moratorium on shut-offs, those customers would, in fact, have had their water shut off. So it's basically, we're kind of in a holding pattern, the same place that we were before. Collections continue to be problematic, and we are going to talk about a plan to do with collections here in just a moment. So without any other questions, I'll deal to the next agenda item if there are no questions.
Paul, can I ask a question? This is Todd Sanders.
Certainly.
So this would be slides 51, 52 through 56, actually 58, where you offer two slides per category. So the first ones on 51 and 52 are single-family residential volume revenue per dollar of fixed. And then slide 52 is single-family residential volume revenue per dollar fixed. I can't figure out the difference between the two.
The difference is the scale at the bottom. So on this slide, the numbers are slightly different.
Oh, yeah. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, it's the number of years. So you get a longer term since the trend, and then you can get that short term since the trend. And the important thing here, Commissioner Sanders, is that we have seen a reduction over the longer term from where we were prior to the summer of 2019 where it really came down. But that in the COVID period, it has somewhat recovered. And if we look at just the one-year snapshot, you see actually an upward trend since COVID. So that's the important takeaway from that slide.
I was just looking at the obsess of the Y axes.
Yes.
Now, good question and good clarification. Thank you.
This is Jim Doan. Now that we have seen a reduction in consumption, when we do the rate impact to our families, I hope that we're going to take the reduction in consumption into developing those typicals. Is that correct?
Well, so Commissioner Doan, that's an excellent question, and we'll go back and we will reexamine it. Each year, though, we actually do assessment to see if we still are, for that typical customer, at seven CCF. And frankly, it looks like we're still going to be at about seven CCF per customer. So on an average month. But if it drops below seven to six, then we'll present six. If it went up, Dave, we would present eight. So we do that analysis each year just to make sure that that typical bill is, in fact, still typical.
Okay, so we're making the adjustments as we go along as just standard practice.
Yes, and since I've been here, it's been at seven, and we've looked at it continually. And that seems to be sort of where the district's customers are.
Yeah, it seems like it's stabilized. When I worked there, we fell from 10 CCF on average to seven. And believe me, that was kind of a gut punch, but it was one of those things that if it happens, it happens, and you have to recognize it and you have to institutionalize it.
Right, I just had seen the grasp, perhaps not in this packet, but in a previous packet, that showed that the average consumption was still declining. And I just was, as long as it's self-adjusting, I'm okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't saying everybody was using 10 when everybody was using seven.
Well, and Commissioner Doan, if it did drop, we would have, we would discuss that with the board as well, because I think it's important that, there are two values there. One is to make sure that when we see a typical customer bill is so much that we're presenting something that is in fact based on, that's based on the data that we have. But the other value is to have consistency over time. And we don't want the numbers to gyrate from year to year based on a good or bad summer and have our customers confused as to what it is for a typical customer. So we do look at it over a period of time to reduce that volatility and make sure that it is a reasonable number. If we saw the trend dropping below that, I would certainly want to bring that to the boards, that you would be aware of that before we integrate it into the presentations that we make, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
It does make sense. And it also, I mean, a third value is when we talk about our rate structure, the typical customer's base usage plays into how we should and do structure our rates. So that's important, that we keep abreast of that and make sure we know what's going on. Do we have other questions from commissioners about this presentation? If not, then I'll move to the next agenda item, which is an informational presentation on the draft plan to enhance collections from customers who've been affected by COVID-19. And we have a staff report from our Customer Services Manager, Andrew Carlstrom.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Bagnall. All right. So we're going to be talking about the collections plan, and this has been a cross-functional effort between the CEO, Customer Service, Finance, and Communications and Public Affairs. So it's really been a team effort on this. So the first thing we want to highlight is that the customer arrears have been growing. As you know, shut-offs were suspended in March 2020 due to COVID. The numbers as of last month, February 2021, 2,094 customers are in shut-off status, and the aggregate of what they owe is about 914,000 in past due water charges. A little over 400,000 of this total is past due more than 120 days. And 27% of customers participate in the CARES Utility Assistance Program, which actually was a good number regionally, but that expired in December of last year. And you've seen the heat map before of where a lot of the customers are struggling reside, and those would be in the more in the red and magenta colors. So what are we trying to do with this plan that we're going to be talking about with you tonight? Well, we want to support customers in order that they can bring their accounts current. And as a foundation of the plan, we're going to be communicating with customers and our partners in advance of resuming shut-offs. Some of the goals we have for the plan, we want to reduce their arrears balances by engaging our customers in order that they can take actions to reduce their account balances. And we also want to increase donations to the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund through customer education. So the first item we have there for our components is a tailored communication and outreach for eliciting a customer response. All customers with past due balances will be notified by June. Starting, first, we'll start with the oldest and largest balances, and we'll alert customers that there are risks of service interruptions or shut-off if they don't respond. So staff will communicate with customers, and with customers who respond, that there is customer emergency assistance, and as well as we're going to be offering extended payment plans with incentives. Customers who don't respond will receive shut-off notices. And we're thinking at this point that shut-off notices, we would begin with the irrigation customer class. The second item we have is incentivized payment plans for customers who pay their outstanding balances. And these would be temporary payment plans that we're developing with certain parameters for qualification, and we'll be offering incentives, including discounts. In terms of modifying the Customer Emergency Assistance Program, we're planning on promoting a modified program heavily with customers who are at risk of entering shut-off status or have a low balance arrear. So in addition to working with customers who have those larger balances, we want to help customers, to help them avoid getting to that point. So we'll be providing customer service staff with greater flexibility to increase the amount of emergency assistance that customers can be offered within defined parameters. Well, first, this will be time limited. We're looking at removing the one-time per-year limit. We're looking at waiving the requirements regarding the full balance, and also waiving the requirement to have the account being in effect for at least six months first. Other things that we're looking at are revising our business processes to reduce the past due account balances, and also revising our business practices to help customers to avoid shut-off status, as I mentioned earlier. So in terms of, let me just get this here. Okay, in terms of managing the plan, we're gonna be looking at the short term, the intermediate term, and the long term. So I'm going to cover the short term. Paul's going to handle the intermediate term, and then Tom's gonna talk about the long term. In the short term, this is April to June, and we're going to be looking at our existing policies. Is there anything we need to modify? We're going to be assessing our resource needs, including what tools do we have and need to manage the repayment plans. Eventually, this is the functionality we'll have in the new CIS, but we will need intermediary tools. We'll be training staff in the temporary payment plans, as well as modified customer assistance, so they're ready when the customer outreach commences. And then finally, we'll be managing the payment plans and customer service, or customer assistance, excuse me. So at this point, I'm going to hand this off to Paul for the intermediate term items.
Before you do that, Andrew, I have a question for you, which is, I assume you are, but I just want to ask so I know, are you working with Clean Water Services? And what are they doing to help with this effort? Because certainly they are affected too by these arrears, and it seems like they should be helping with this outreach effort to get people current with their bills.
We have been working with Clean Water Services. I'm going to leave that to either Paul or Andrea to take that question.
Yeah, so, yes, Commissioner Bagnall. So actually, Clean Water Services has budgeted some money for this very, for this kind of a program. The challenge that they're having right now is that it's kind of technical, but they budgeted that as part of their regional program, as opposed to their retail program. So that money that's budgeted, they need to find an equitable way to share that with the cities who then are dealing with the customer, have the customer-facing function on the sewer side, as opposed to just interfacing with us on the water side. So what that means is that they've got a little bit more of a complex situation where they need to have a problem, a solution that works for their retail customers that are served by TVWD, as well as those customers who are served directly by the cities. And we're working with them. They have a full understanding of the problem. Their attitude about this, I think, has really changed in the past several years. You might remember the CARES Act dollars that we have was a grant that actually Clean Water Services secured for the region to community action. So we're hopeful that we can work hand-in-hand with them in partnership to get this moving. But having said that, it is a challenge that when you have a water and a sewer and a stormwater bill, we need the customer to pay the entire bill. And that's what causes Clean Water Services to work closely with us, because we have that shared responsibility and concern.
Well, I'm glad to hear, well, I'm glad to hear they're doing something, because that was actually my concern, is that they're just sitting back and relying on all of the water entities to bring the hammer down, when in point of fact, they need to be there as partners, helping us to reach out to these customers and get them current. Because in many cases, especially through the winter months, the sewer and stormwater bill is two-thirds of the bill. So that's a big deal, and they need to be part of the solution, as well as part of the problem.
Yes, I completely agree. We won't have a solution if we don't have them on board that will serve our customers well. In terms of the intermediate term, one of the concerns that we have is to make sure this program scales up. And because this is our first pandemic where we have not turned off water, and we have almost 2,100 customers that haven't paid a bill in quite some time, we need to make sure that our systems, staff, and everything are capable of handling the workload that comes in. So we've built into this plan continuous improvement that when we get the data, we'll analyze it to make sure that our program is effective, scalable, and achieving its ends. We're also going to pursue federal assistance, just as we did with the CARES Act. I think you heard earlier this evening about some of the federal dollars that may be coming in to help customers with their utility bills. We want to be prepared for those dollars and be able to assist our customers in taking advantage of those programs. However, they're very premature at this point. So as we set up the program, we want to make sure we can quickly pivot to get our customer support through those programs. And then I'm not sure I'd say intermediate term, but as I mentioned earlier, we are going to request that we fund a rate study in the coming biennium to include customer affordability, as well as assistance programs in there. We're certainly going to look at aspects that help us stabilize revenues, so we have greater revenue stability. And we also think our customers would be well-served if we look at affordability. So in general, we'll be looking at a process similar to what we did with the Rate Advisory Committee. And at this point, given where we are with our CS project, we're hoping that some of these things can then be easily implemented once we get past that phase that Andrew talked about earlier. Okay, moving on to the long term. After we get out of the COVID and we've completed our rate study, we want to establish permanent customer support policies in a program to support our low-income customers in a way that prevents shut-offs. The exact elements of that program and how that would be stood up, that'd obviously be a conversation that we would have with the board, and it would come out of the efforts that we do with the rate study itself.
And I would just like to commend staff for the great work you've done with outreach to our customers and with research on the CARES project and other resources for our customers. I am really, really impressed that, I mean, it's sad that our partners, that our neighboring utilities haven't done as much, but it's very impressive, of course, that TVWD did such a good job in identifying those resources that are available to our customers and letting our customers know and putting them in touch with what they needed to get stuff done. I wish I knew how to clap like somebody's clapping, because I want to do that, too.
Can I add something there? So I just want to say, our customer service staff, you know, the frontline folks that are making these calls, that are having these conversations, I can't thank them enough and the amazing work that they've done. They really have been the backbone of this to make this all happen. So I just, they've been amazing, and they deserve a lot of acknowledgement. And a lot of their work, it goes unseen. They don't get out there and get the pictures taken of them. But the work that they do is probably one of the most important jobs we have, which is without them, we don't get the money in to run our organization. So I really want to thank them. I would also, if I could, I would like to ask Andrea to jump into the conversation here. Andrea had a conversation with CWS about working with us on this, and I think it's important that you hear what she heard directly from them.
Yeah, thank you, and good evening, commissioners. We've been, as Andrew said, really working closely as a team, because there are a lot of moving parts with this. When you're talking about changing business practices and reaching that many customers over a short period of time, we know that we have to get this right the first time, and that we have to really be coordinated and not overwhelm any of our systems, including those of our billing partner at Clean Water Services. So when we were finished through the Financial Response Team process that Paul's leading, with coming up with our plans, which is a lot of ideas and an order that we think makes sense to break down this larger group into smaller chunks so that we can really be focused on a certain type of rate class or a certain area at a time so that we get the efficiencies that we need to. We stood up a meeting with all of the finance and billing staff from Kathy Leader and Francine Gaunt and Erin Lowry, and walked them through, you know, here's what our thinking is. Do any of these ideas cause problems for you? Does it make a revenue issue for you? You know, and they immediately identified, well, when you offer discounts, they're going to be calling us and asking us to offer discounts. So they need some time to work through their process to see if they need board approval, to work with their, you know, leadership team, like we've been working with ours. And so they're very responsive, and we believe that the compromises that we're making and the way that we're rolling this out is going to enable them to come alongside and do something similar in a short period of time, if they can make it through their approval processes. But each of these organizations has, you know, different levels of policies that they've put in place, and so they're going to work through that, and I think we'll see some good responses. And then they're also putting staff on our working team, so that we're going to be working with them as we process these ideas. And, you know, that'll just make it better. And then, as Paul pointed out, you know, they were a really good partner with the CARES from creating it all the way to they paid half of the cost for marketing it. So they've paid us back for the mailings and printing and the processes that we did. And so we're feeling really good about how that partnership is getting stronger as we move through time.
Thank you, Andrea. And I also want to acknowledge something Paul said earlier that I tend to forget. Clean Water Services has regional agreements with many of the, they call them member cities, and they are primarily revenue-sharing agreements. So they not only need to deal with us, but they need to recognize the effects that any agreements they make with us will have on the revenue sharing they do with their member cities. And I tend to forget that, so it's a timely reminder. But I'm glad to hear we're working with them. That's all good.
So the other thing, I also wanted to make sure and give Andrea credit. Andrea, all of us have been pretty busy. Paul and his staff certainly have been doing a ton of work on this, but there, he's also been, well, beyond eyeball-deep in budget stuff and financial strategy and the financial plan. And Andrew's been very busy with CIS. So we asked Andrea to step up and help us pull this all together, and she's really done an amazing amount of work here that I want to recognize in helping us pull this all together. She sat down with our customer service folks to recognize, you know, what their concerns were with the short-term plan and making sure we could actually do what we're saying. So anyways, I just wanted to recognize her efforts in all of this as well.
So with that, are there any questions about the intermediate or long term? And if not, I'm gonna, Tom, I'm gonna turn it back to you.
Okay, so the next thing here is the policy question that we have for the board. Um, so you know, we, we are in this suspension of shut offs that um, we've stayed in now for uh, more than a year. And uh, but we are in, also in a unsustainable situation. Um, to continue this situation where we have outstanding uh, bills getting to the level that they are. So uh, we want to make sure that the board is comfortable with us resuming shut offs for customers who do not respond or engage in communications with us about their bills. Uh, is the board comfortable with us? Uh, if, if we have customers that fail to communicate with us, are, are you comfortable with us then actually going and disrupting their service?
Uh, this is Dick. I think if we make a reasonable effort and they don't make a reasonable response, uh, go for it.
I agree. I, I think that staff does a wonderful job of reaching out to people and offering them alternatives. And if they don't respond, if they don't meet us halfway, then they should be back on the shut off list.
This is Jim Doan. I tend to agree. Uh, you know, uh, this isn't a free ride. Uh, the shut offs are going to be, not going to be suspended indefinitely. And I think some people have uh, tried to uh, game the system. And I think it's now the time to inject a, a dose of reality, as much as I hate to say that.
Uh, this is Jim Duggan. I, I concur with everything that's been said so far. Um, I, I just want to make sure that, that staff, when they, they are prepared to do shut offs, that um, we, we have all the, the facts backing up in case uh, it becomes um, a, a media circus on next door someplace else so that we can quickly respond with, hey, we contacted these persons XX and X like our normal policy is, and uh, we, we got no response. So um, i- if, if we're the first agency to uh, and I, I haven't heard any other agencies make the news. Um, for the first agency to uh, um, start shutting people off, um, I, I want to make sure that we, we have the great story to, to go, uh, go with it. And I'm, I'm positive staff will, will have that in mind, but I just wanted to put that out there that uh, I, I don't want to be on the bleeding edge of, of uh, coming back to reality, so to speak.
And uh, this is Todd Sanders and I echo what Commissioner Duggan had just said about um, the awareness of uh, the publicities that could follow.
So I, I believe.
So I agree. And I just, and once again, I want to, I, I think TVWD has a really good story to tell. We have completely suspended shut offs for a year. And our staff has aggressively tried to put customers, tried to connect customers with CARES dollars and methods to, to get them current. That's a good story to tell. And sure, we don't, we don't want to be out there in the media being the bad guy. But, but I, I think that the level of care that our customer service staff has shown will give us a good story.
Yes, and I, I'll just say that uh, one, we do uh, we do document our conversations. Um, so that we, we do know uh, how many times we've reached out, what we've said, uh, commitments that were made. Um, our goal here isn't to shut anyone off. Uh, that's actually not at all, right? Our, our goal here is to help our customer uh, get current or get access to uh, the funding that's available to them. Uh, but we need them to communicate with us. And this is the tool that we have to make sure that they do that. Uh, so that, that's really what this is about is to, to make sure that w- w- we use this as a tool to, for those that um, haven't responded. This, this will help get them to, to talk with us.
Well, that makes sense to me and it sounds like the board is on board. So away we go. Um, I don't see any other items on the agenda unless, unless there's some secret why.
Uh, President Bagnell, we, we just had a few more slides left in this deck. Uh, sorry to spring one you here at the last minute.
I did not know that.
I, I'm sorry. I completely forgot about these. Uh, but just to give uh, kind of where we're, where we're at and, and Paul, I'm going to let you walk through these.
You bet. Uh, thanks, Tom. So this is the same information that I presented you before. These are those customers that are in that shut off status. And, and what that means is uh, if we weren't in a COVID environment, these customers would have received a shut off notice sometime in the past and would have had their water service interrupted for non-payment. So as of uh, February, uh, last, the, the last month of February, we've got 2,094 customers that we're trying to assist on them getting current. Uh, total amount that we have uh, payable for them is uh, $914, which is about 400 and I think $438 when I did the math. Somebody can check me on that. Uh, because it's been a couple of days since I did the math uh, per uh, per account. So uh, and uh, of that, one of the other things that we're looking at is the average age of account receivables because that affects our bad debt expense. And you've heard me talk about bad debt expense uh, way back when this pandemic started. I think I mentioned, uh, talked about the impact that that's going to have on us as this unfolds. We're going to have to evaluate our account receivables as we get towards the end of this fiscal year to make sure that our financial statements uh, do what our orders require, which is to fairly state uh, the district's financial position. And that means that we need to assess uh, the validity of our account receivables and take a charge against them to recognize that some of these accounts are quite old and will not be repaid. So we've made the adjustments uh, to our write-off rates. And uh, we've included that in our uh, our current uh, expenses. And it's going to have a substantial impact on our budget request for that bad, bad debt expense next year. But these are the trends. Uh, and of course, we're wanting to turn these trends around by getting customers engaged. One of the other things that occurs, when we get a customer on a payment plan and they start making payments, that gives us more information as to whether or not the account receivable will be realized as a payment. And uh, and so we're really flying blind. We have no history of not shutting off customers. Uh, it's not something that's common in the water industry. So we're all kind of learning as we go through time. And that uh, is the uh, end of our presentation on this, on this matter. If there are any questions, uh, I'm sure that uh, Tom, Andrew, I, or Andrew could answer them.
Okay, I found the applause button, but it seems inappropriate for such a big increase in the age of accounts receivable.
Yeah, this might not be the slide that we want to.
I know, maybe not the one where I want to clap. But next time I'll know.
I gave, I gave you a different one to applaud to. So uh.
Oh, 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 so goodie, I'm going to do it. Thank you. All right. So, so now that was the last slide, right?
That was it. We, we are done.
Okay. So if there's nothing else for the good of the order and no further business, then I will declare this meeting adjourned.